There are a handful of scenarios exactly like that. Might not be a grandchild, but there's nephews, there's nieces, close family relatives. Another scenario that has come up with a handful of employees involves anxiety in returning to work, just overall anxiety. We don't have many cases like that, but there are a handful. These individuals don't fall under a high-risk category. They don't have pre-existing health conditions. They don't have children at home to care. And in these instances, these employees cannot telework. If they could telework, then they could watch the children at home and telework. So these are employees who cannot telework. In looking at these types of situations coming to us, we realize that the governor, the commissioner of education, our own attorneys, different district HR executive directors like me as we talk, everyone is saying to extend compassion and caring as much as possible. So I didn't know exactly what to do with these cases. I believe some of them are valid, and I am looking to you for guidance in how to move forward with them. So my request to you is, would you look at the provisions and make a decision whether to or not to relax some of our school board policies by creating an emergency declaration that would allow our employees to use their accrued sick time? So certainly not that we would be paying them as we would with through the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. That's where we pay the employee due to provisions that they qualify for, and they do not use their accrued time. This would be the employee using their accrued sick time and/or the possibility of going uncompensated for the purpose of watching a child at home that is not their son or daughter, and we'll go into that a little bit more, or anxiety to come to work over the pandemic. So option one regarding what to do with these cases is certainly do nothing. That certainly is an option, and I want you to know that. We do not legally have to offer any provisions outside of the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. We certainly have to comply with the act, but outside of that, we do not have to offer any special conditions. Truly, we could say, "You cannot watch the child. You will report to work." And if they don't, then, or we're sad about your anxiety. We feel for you, however, we're stating you must return to work. Then we would, and if an employee did not, we would move forward with our regular procedures and policies that we have in place. So certainly option one is to offer no provisions. Option two is to relax our school board policies and allow for a very limited time. In fact, we probably wouldn't put a time limit on it. After speaking with a couple of attorneys, we would more than likely, if this happened, say until this policy or declaration is rescinded. So this is in place until it is rescinded by the board. In speaking with Mr. Levitt, he did say that that, a phrase like that at the end of the declaration or the beginning would definitely allow the board to pull that back immediately at any time. So option two would be to relax our policies and allow our employees to use their accrued time and/or to go into an uncompensated state where they are not paid at all to care for a family member who is not their son or daughter. My suggestion with that would be not to allow for a neighbor down the road, but it would be close family members, just like our school board policy outlines for sick time. We literally outline, and so does the statute. We keep in the exact definition of the statute for sick time. And I actually gave you that in your packet, and we can look at that if you want to. But our family is defined as close family, and certainly household members and mothers, fathers. So to care for a family member who is not a son or daughter, but is a family member for up to 12 weeks, just like the act provides under the COVID situation. And it's important to know if an employee goes into an uncompensated state, the board does not continue to pay the insurance, the employee's portion of the insurance, or the board's portion of the insurance. So once they go uncompensated, the board would not even be paying the board's portion of the employee's insurance.
What about unemployment? Would they be eligible for unemployment benefits?
If someone was, oh, I see what you mean. If they went uncompensated but still worked for us? I don't know those laws well enough to speak to that.
I don't think so.
I think that might be an issue if you're holding their position.
Right.
Isn't that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Putting them uncompensated but holding a position?
Correct.
For a limited time.
Right. If they're, from my understanding of the unemployment, I'm not an expert by no means, but if we're holding that position, they're not unemployed.
They're not eligible for unemployment.
It would be good to truly have that clarified.
And I don't believe they would be because currently we allow our employees to be uncompensated for up to two years while we hold their job. That's already board policy.
But I do have a question about that. I'm just, I just thought of something. Aren't some of our employees, like over the summer, allowed to file unemployment compensation? The ones that are hourly? I seem to remember that. Like bus drivers or bus aides or parents, the ones that don't work over the summer? I think they are allowed. I'm not sure.
I've heard conflicting information on that. I've heard one person say they are, and then I heard someone else say they have a contract for the next year, so they're not deemed to be unemployed. So I've heard two different answers to that question.
I can't speak to that. I'd have heard as long as you were holding the position, they were not available for unemployment. You know, a lot of companies furloughed their employees, and they're not eligible for unemployment.
Because they're furloughed because they're holding their position.
So under option two, there's also the option of if an employee is so anxious, they feel they cannot report to work, give them up to two weeks of their own accrued sick time use, which one could argue if you're ill over being anxious, you could use your own sick time for that.
I have a, you know, that's hard to define. And I almost, if we're going to allow anxiety to become a part of this, they almost need some type of doctors.
Well, and that is exactly...
Because, I mean, anybody, anybody can be.
Right.
It's in there.
They're hanging themselves with the employee assistant program. Well, that's part of this.
Okay.
Give her a chance. Give her a chance.
Okay.
So, and in speaking with Mr. Levitt yesterday in prep for this, I asked him specifically about that. And he said, "Giving a couple of weeks for an employee who is anxious over the pandemic and afraid to come back to work is certainly not out of line, very compassionate. You're letting them use their own accrued time or go uncompensated for a short time, and it gives them time to prep, to get their mind wrapped around coming back to work, secure masks, secure gloves, and/or if they truly know they'd have no intent to return right now, it gives them time to get into a doctor or get to a teledoctor and get something back so that they can qualify for regular medical FMLA under an anxiety disorder." We have people that certainly have a documented anxiety disorder. We've had those qualify certainly. They can take up to two years of uncompensated time under our FMLA for 12 weeks, and then our district medical for the rest of that year and the following year. So that certainly is in place. And if they couldn't come back within the two weeks, not us paying them, but them using their accrued leave or being in an uncompensated state, they would have to go through the district regular FMLA. Well, really, federal FMLA. So option three, those, option two uses the same timeframe that the Florida First Coronavirus Response Act uses just to keep it in line and give us something that, you know, give the numbers a reason. As in talking to Mr. Levitt yesterday, he complimented you, Reverend Cummings, in the way that he thought that was very good to have that parallel. However, if it makes you uncomfortable for that timeframe, then certainly this third option would be give up to six weeks in allowing, you know, allowing an employee to use their own accrued time. And one week for the anxiety and securing masks, gloves, and then getting into a doctor if they feel like there's no way they can return. Anxiety certainly is a medical issue, and I don't believe a misuse of sick time. But if you have continued anxiety to where you cannot report to work, then that becomes a serious medical illness, and we have parameters. The federal government has parameters. The district has parameters in place for that. So the next slide just shows you everything there that we just discussed in a row. No provisions at all. We simply implement the act. 12 weeks for childcare. Child has to be a family member. Up to two weeks if there's an employee in such an anxious state. Option three, six weeks and one week. In speaking with the attorney, he was clear that there are districts across the state making provisions to relax their sick leave policies, to allow employees to use their own accrued time for things such as this. We are in a pandemic. Schools are closed. We are in a state of emergency. The governor has now extended that state of emergency for an additional 60 days. If you look at the next slide that you've got in front of you, Leave of Absence School Board Policy 6.5, Roman numeral four, does say, "Accrued leave for sickness or other emergencies may be deemed to be granted in advance if prompt report is made to the proper authorities." So we can allow for sickness or other emergencies if you choose to. Under six, you can see that the leave may be with or without pay as provided by law, regulations of the state board, and these rules. So you have an ability to create a declaration, an emergency declaration in a state of emergency in relation to this pandemic for employees to be out.
I have, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
How many of our employees that are in these situations, especially the childcare, have 12 weeks of accrued sick leave?
I did not look up that information in preparing for this.
And number two, I think the board provision for the sick leave bank is for illnesses, for catastrophic. So I want to be sure that these folks cannot dip into the sick leave bank.
Oh, correct. This would certainly not be sick leave bank.
They have to have this leave already on the books, not pull the leave out of the bank.
Okay. Well, I want to be sure because, you know, I want to be sure that we're very clear about that.
Correct.
Because we do have that sick leave bank, and I'm pretty sure it's catastrophic. But I just want to double-check so that we don't leave a loophole open for that.
That's a good point.
And having this discussion with Dr. Mayer, Ms. Oliver, Ms. Boston Ellis, we talked about unintended consequences. And what you just mentioned is something that's unintended consequence. And Ms. Boston Ellis was adamant that we need to make sure, and all of us at the table were adamant that whatever we comment with, we need to make sure that it's airtight so that people are not going to abuse anything that could be possibly implemented because this is, it's an emergency situation.
So the language has to be very, very clear.
And if it's stated employees can use their own accrued sick leave or go uncompensated, there could be a comment certainly about this in no way would apply to the sick leave bank.
Correct.
Yeah.
I want to be sure because we're running short in that bank.
Yes, we are.
Right.
Yes.
And we don't want to leave that loophole open. Because some may claim this is catastrophic.
I understand.
So we need to be very clear.
Emergencies are pretty catastrophic.
Yeah. So we need to be very clear.
That's right. That's a good point. 6.549 is the sick leave board policy. It outlines right there that an employee may use their sick time because of the illness or death of the father, mother, brother, sister, husband, wife, child. And that's a lot of very, very close relatives. And then it says other close relatives, which after you look at the father, mother, brother, sister, husband, wife, child, you're probably looking at grandchild, niece, nephew. Those would be the most close after those. Or a member of the household, which may not even be a family member as long as they're a true member of the household. That is how we define for the use of sick leave.
So a foster child would fit in?
Oh, certainly. Member of the household, absolutely. Even if you're just appointed guardian, that would, that would fall under that.
What about stepparents?
As long, I would say certainly a stepchild.
I would say that would be other.
Mm-hmm. Other close relative. And certainly this is sick leave. But in speaking with Mr. Levitt, it was clear that he agreed too that when schools are closed and children need care due to a pandemic, the only reason they're at home is because of the pandemic, which is related to illness. And our board policy says that accrued leave for sickness or other emergencies may be deemed to be granted in advance if prompt report is made to the proper authorities. I think that we can, he was not worried at all about the definition of that and this not applying. And he was not worried about an audit and felt like if we had an emergency declaration in place and, you know, we're using it for these very specific purposes, that you, those things would be, would be fine. Now, of course, the school board attorney would be, you know, working with you on those issues as well. But that was my discussion yesterday. We know that the school board has the ability to create rule in an emergency situation without complying with the regular rulemaking timelines. So that is what this would be requiring if you choose to do option two or three.
So I think we could do, if we were to decide on two or three, if we were to decide on that. I think we have the ability to do resolutions or emergency declarations which would allow us to do something without having to go through rulemaking and changing the policy and all that stuff. And we could put a timeframe on it as Ms. Oliver suggested, that we could pull back whenever we need to pull back. Just for you guys to think about.
Yeah, I think we don't put a date or we just make language in there that...
And the suggested, some of the suggested language, and obviously this is just suggested. This policy is in effect until further notice. The board has the right to rescind this at any time with notice to employees.
That sounds good.
So you have some policies from other districts that have already been written?
No, I do not. I know Lake County, they said they don't have anyone really asking and not qualifying for provisions. They've got a different system in place. Their bus drivers and aides are home 100% of the time and being paid. And then their HVAC employees, custodial employees, maintenance, minor maintenance people, those type of workers, they're home 50%, working 50%, getting paid 100%. So when we spoke to them, they aren't having these issues because people are not in need. So different counties are doing different things for their own purposes. And, but certainly, there are other counties that are relaxing sick leave. Mr. Levitt was telling me that 40 nursing homes that they, they represent relaxed their sick leave policies and are allowing employees to use their accrued time or to even have uncompensated time across the state. So people are just trying to be creative and keep people employed and keep people paid as much as possible and extend compassion.
Sick leave, can you talk a little bit about that? How is, how does an employee gain sick leave? And how can they, in regular circumstances? And how can they use it in regular circumstances? And when an employee retires, if they have sick leave banked, what happens to that?
Well, if an employee retires and they have sick leave, and then we call it terminal pay, and we pay out. We pay the leave in a lump sum, and I believe it goes into a Benkor fund. And that protects the leave from taxes until the money is withdrawn. So if I have a year's worth of sick leave built up, then that's a nice little nest egg. A check or the money goes into Benkor. It's tax-protected until it is withdrawn. And certainly, that is a very nice benefit for an employee. With our, most of our employees, I would say, the employees in bargaining units, represented employees, these sick days are paid out at their highest rate of pay. So if they work for us for 30 years and retire, it doesn't matter when they earned the first day of sick leave. We pay it out at their highest rate of pay. District employees unfortunately get paid their sick leave out at the rate in which they earned it. So when I was a teacher at $14,000 a year, years ago, telling my age, I get paid out at that rate and so on, up until my highest rate of pay. So actually, if people use their sick leave now at this point for, for this reason, if we allow them to use their benefit that they've accrued, it would be a little bit of a savings if the employee then went on to be, you know, continued to be employed and had increases to salary. We'd be paying it out at the rate they're, they are now rather than the rate that they would be when they retired. So certainly, if they go uncompensated for a short time, 12 weeks, two weeks, six weeks, one week or less, then that would be a savings for our county, and that could, you know, go to our rollover. So in regard to how they earn it, I think different employees earn it differently. In your sick leave policy that I provided you, and these policies here in the slides are not the entire policy, obviously. And I didn't want you to see things out of context and not provide you the entire policy. So you do have the entire 6.50 and 6.549. And 6.549 does outline how an employee receives or earns sick leave. So administrative, non-instructional employees shall be credited four days of sick leave at the end of every, at the end of the first month. You know, because you don't have much built up. If you're brand new, if you get strep throat and you need to be out a week, you at least have four days given to you right away.
So as the board considers these options and the public listens in, it's, I think, important to note, especially for the public, that sick leave is an earned benefit.
It is.
And if, like you said, that if they don't use it now at the end of their time with us, they can cash it in. So for them to choose it now is a huge decision to use that sick leave now in this case.
It can be like a little savings account. That's how I look at my sick leave. It's like a little savings account. And then employees go on to earn one day of sick leave at the end of each month that they work. So as long as they're a working paycheck-earning employee, they are receiving that. If they happen to go on something like district medical leave for two years and they were not working, then they would not continue to accrue sick leave, of course. So it certainly is a benefit. It is a benefit that they earn. We have rules in place that people cannot just go uncompensated without some kind of a board-approved leave after X number of days. And we certainly have sick leave policies in place. We just need to decide what we are doing with these handful of cases that are rolling in that where our employees do not qualify for the federal act and whether we want to offer provisions or not.
I got a question as far as that sick leave. If they hold on to their sick leave all the way to the end, are they paid for every hour or a percentage of the...
Good question. I don't have that policy in front of me, I don't think, unless it is also part of this. But I do know that it depends on how many years you've worked for our county. I don't want to say 10, but maybe after a certain number of years, you get 100% of that sick leave pay. Prior to whatever that number is, you're earning 50%, something like that. So you're only earning a percentage of it until you work for us for a number of years.
So which option do you guys recommend?
We recommend option two. It's in line with the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. The numbers make sense. We believe people using their own accrued time or possibly being uncompensated if we allow for that are going to be smart about it and use it if they need it only. They're taking down their own time. They're taking away, they're using their benefit in the way of Dr. Mayer suggesting it wouldn't be there for a payout later. Certainly, if they're uncompensated, they must seriously need to be at home, whether due to anxiety or to care for the child. So I think that our employees do know what they need. I think we're in unprecedented times. I think that it would be compassionate to extend the use of their own accrued leave or to allow them to go into an uncompensated state for a limited time under very strict and well-defined parameters that the board can rescind as needed.
I'm okay with that. My question would be, are there any other circumstances that might come to light that we might need to address that are not addressed here?
We could put a provision in the declaration that says the board has the ability to approve other situations under this declaration as it sees fit, or someone who can write that better than me.
I just, I don't think there would be another situation, but there could be. And then if there is, we've put ourselves in a position where that employee is going to have to... So I don't know. I'm just saying maybe we ought to have some type of language in there.
So is that, I hear what you're saying, Ms. McCall. Whoever is approving authority, I think the approving authority would be you guys. May need to have some discretion on what is some other stenulating type of circumstances. I can't think off the top of my head right now what those would be. I think you've just kind of addressed two, but there may be some other ones that pop up.
And we definitely want to define that it is not to be used via the sick leave bank. So there's certainly...
And it has to be specifically related to COVID-19 on why they're requesting. And I really can't think of any others, but sure enough, we say that and something would pop up.
Something would pop up.
And no others have come in that I am aware of that would give me reason to believe that we should offer provisions in this way. If they're ill truly and it's not related to COVID, we already have policies and procedures in place for that that protect employees' jobs, so...
And Ms. Oliver, going back to what we talked about the other day, the thing for me is to make sure that we're not, we're not providing a vehicle for abuse.
Correct.
Of this. We talked about those unintended consequences. And some of the unintended consequences that I keep thinking of is the potential for abuse of this. People have to know that if they're doing something, they could lose their job behind this.
Absolutely. And there can be a clause as well that says misuse of these provisions can result in disciplinary action, up to and including termination.
And then the other unintended consequence that I keep thinking of is the shortage of workers, the shortage of staff at some point. We don't know what the fall is going to look like right now. But this is to help folk not to hurt.
End of the system.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're going to need to, I think the language has to be airtight. Whatever document that we as a board draft needs to be airtight with our attorney because of those unintended consequences that... because of those unintended consequences that, I, I keep going back to. When all this started, and Commissioner Cochran was talking, he said that we have to deal with this whole pandemic with compassion and grace. Those are the things that he stated. I think we have been very compassionate and very graceful this whole time, and I think us moving to something like this is extending a little bit more compassion and grace, but we don't need people to abuse it.
Correct. And I know this is setting a precedent, and I understand that, but it is in an emergency time. It is a pandemic. I don't think it's setting a precedent for this to happen in a regular run-of-the-mill time.
And it, and it actually, it is their time that they've accrued. It's a benefit that they, they have already earned. It's their time. So if they use it now, it's their choice, but I, I just don't think a person would want to, me personally, I don't think a person would, if they can't afford to go unpaid for six or 12 weeks and without.
Very few people.
Yeah.
So what are our next steps with this so we can get this done as quickly as possible?
If it's done at the emergency resolution.
As a resolution, was it a resolution?
Yeah.
So who would write that language? Would I get with you?
Yeah, let's talk about it. I've been drafting a few.
You've already been working right there. I love.
Is it too presumptuous to think we could get it for tonight?
Yes.
So we can get this.
That was our hope. That was our hope, but I understand if that's not possible.
I'm happy to talk about it. I guess that the, the agenda's closed and the advertising issues, but yeah.
Correct. And it can be done at any, any meeting where there's a quorum. That's been, the meeting's been, you know, advertised properly. So if we don't make tonight, that's tonight, right? If we don't make tonight, if there's another special, right, right.
Does it have, can it be in a work session? Can it be in a board meeting?
Let me see. It is Board Policy 22, 2.23.
Board meeting?
It says, let's see.
We can't vote in a work session.
"The school board may determine that the public health, safety, or welfare is endangered and that immediate action is required to protect the public interest. When this occurs, the board at any meeting in which a quorum is present may adopt emergency rules without complying with the waiting period, as provided in this section."
Any meeting?
It doesn't sound like there's a whole lot to add, and I believe I heard at the very beginning that it's already in there, that it can be amended as needed. So maybe after the two-of-you caucus, there might just be a couple of statements that will lock it up, and then we could vote on it very quickly, knowing that it, we can amend it if we need to. I think that'll give the employees the peace of mind, you know, the sooner the better. And everyone's definitely been through a lot, and at the same time, we also want to encourage our employees that anytime you have a crisis and you can, you know, you want to get back on the horse, you know, we, our kids need us.
Right.
And.
That's correct.
But at the same time, we, we definitely want to recognize that everyone's situation through all of this is very individualized, and there are people, by staying at home and taking care of kids that, you know, may or may not even be related to them in, in some lineal way, that's doing their part, so.
You are right.
So, so any meeting, we could.
I'm happy to stick around and we can see if we could get something and.
Possibly for tonight, for tonight. Sounds good. Sounds, thanks, Ms. McCall, for being so persistent. But we, the, the thing is, the thing is, we didn't say what option. We did not.
The board wants the 12 weeks and two weeks, or the six weeks and one week?
I'm fine with two, since that's what they're recommending.
There's continuity there.
And, of course, Stacey's not here, but, yeah.
I actually did speak with her yesterday because she, she wanted to have an update about the meeting. So she said that she had no problems with, with anything and was, was fine with whatever the board decided.
So I would definitely not be fine with doing nothing. It's not the time to do nothing.
And, and, and she basically said the same thing. She said, "So you're telling me it's not us just paying them? They're using their own accrued time?" And I said, "Yes, ma'am." She goes, "Oh, well, so..." She was right along the lines of you all, and, and expressed her, her, her regret for not being here, so.
We're moving forward with option two.
Okay, option two.
Doing a resolution for the board and possibly having it ready for tonight.
All right. Thank you much. I appreciate your time, and I have a lot of work to do. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Once again, that's just, the board's still trying to make sure we take care of our employees. Before we go, any board concerns? Dr. Mayer? Ms. Green? Elena? Ms. McCall? Ms. Key? None for me. Meeting is adjourned at 9:42 a.m.